I'll give it one more minute.
You know Tom Wines?
Who?
Tom Wines, he lived in North Beach.
Okay, we're ready to go? Okay, good evening, everybody, and thank you for streaming with us tonight. I would like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission of Chesapeake Beach. It is September 24th, 2020, I'm sorry, I might even on month, thank you very much, Commissioner Brown. It is September 24th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Let's start with Ms. Han, Commissioner Han down at the end, please.
Kelly Han, present.
Mary Sue Graceman, present.
I'm Cindy Greenold.
Larry Brown, present.
So please note that we do have a quorum for tonight's meeting. And next, I would like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the Union States. For which it stands one nation, united, in the Constitution.
Thank you. Number three is approval of the September 24th, 2025 Planning Commission Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the Planning Commission.
Do I have a second?
I can second.
Any discussions or changes? Okay, all in favor, please, of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number four, approval of the minutes of the August 27th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? I will second.
She wasn't.
Do I, do I have any discussion? Do I have a discussion about the minutes? Any changes or deletions or additions? Okay, I hear nothing? Okay, all in favor of approving the minutes? Aye, thank you. Okay, now is time for our public hearing for the.
If you would note that Kelly and I both abstained because we weren't at last meeting.
And I also want to also note, thank you for saying that. I also want to note that Commissioners Smith and Redkey are not present. So just for our notes, we will have that. But thank you for abstaining. Yeah, we need three. Two, four, five. We need three, we need three votes out of five, right? Isn't that how? We need four? We do need four because our usual quorum is four. Yes, we do need four to approve. Right, right. So that's good to be aware of that. Okay, so we will, I'm going to have a public hearing in about two minutes. So anybody who's streaming and wants to run down here, we have nobody in the audience as of yet to testify. But if you can run down here in the next few minutes, we will delay. And hopefully, somebody can show up. And it is about our draft ordinance, which is on signage. We've been working on this draft for, I don't know, probably since January or February. So we've put a lot of time and effort into it. Hopefully, we've tightened it up and we've added some things, especially with the electronic messaging centers, which are the digital signage that we see throughout the town. We've added a whole new section for that. So I'm assuming that if nobody is here, that everybody must probably appreciate what they're reading on our website. So I guess I'm going to have to just assume that. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open it. Public hearing, we do have a quorum. All Commissioners that you see here are ready to go. So far, I'm seeing nobody coming in the door.
Can I ask Ms. Franklin a question? Has Roland's or the Peaking store up here, any of the businesses approached you about the signage?
No. No, we only have the comments that the clerk has shared with you to this point.
We did notice, everybody, we have proper notification, I am assuming, Madam Clerk.
It was advertised and also advertised that you could send in a public comment via email.
Are you saying that there were comments?
Uh, no, I mean, I don't have any comments.
I'm just saying it was advertised and you could, it was also advertised that you could send in a public comment.
Okay, so make sure I didn't miss anything.
Right, no, I have no comments. Okay, I'm going to go ahead, and if everybody is in agreement, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the dais. We're going to go to number six, old business signage. Is there anything you would like to add on a staff report, Ms. Franklin, at this point in time?
So I think it's pretty good where it's at, but I will note that a council member asked me a question at Town Council meeting, which I think has some validity, which is, is the scoreboard over at Callum's Field going to be a problem? And so I think, I think it's not really defined as a sign, but I think it's possible to clarify that. Now, I think it's possible to clarify that when it gets to the council or for you guys to clarify it this evening, either way. But I just wanted to make you all aware of that concern.
What do you think, how do you think we should approach this? Should we put an addition into, or how do you think we should approach it? I, I do know that there are some towns that do put in something about the ads that people put along the fences of some of the ball fields. We didn't really address that either. I mean, we could probably do both if we have any issues about fields entirely.
I think the ads would be okay, right? Because there's, there's not really a building and their banners and they're functionally temporary signs, right?
I guess you're right about that, they're temporary. But it would probably be longer than 90 days a lot of times. I guess the question is, do we want to? Did you already write up some language to put in here, or how did you want to do that?
So there's two ways to approach it, I think. One is to go into the definition of a sign, right? And state a scoreboard located on a government-owned official sports field shall not be considered a sign. And leave it at that, right? That would allow if the school has, has fields that would have a scoreboard, I'm not sure, and Callum's. Or you can put it under exempt signs, right? You, you don't, it's not prohibited, I guess. It's scoreboards. At an official government facility.
Right, right, right. Okay, so that's an idea that we hadn't really thought about, is the scoreboard. How do you all think we should handle this? What is, what do you think about this?
For me, it seems like it would make more sense to put it in the exempt section since it feels like sort of specific to include in the definition section.
I would, I would agree with that. And I think that was a good point by the council member as well.
Commissioner Han, do you, how do you look at this?
I have a question first.
Yes.
Beach Elementary, do they have, do they have any fields that could potentially, they want to put a scoreboard up so that if we put it just for Callum's Field or the government, that this could then potentially impact them?
Right, so I don't know, you guys probably have a better sense than I do, if they would want to put one up. But they are government, so if you allow it on government property, then they would be allowed.
Be covered under it too.
They would be covered.
Under the umbrella, yeah.
Commissioner Brown?
I agree with putting it in.
Okay, I think that's the call we're going to make then. Let's just put some language in the exempt portion.
Official scoreboards located on government-owned property.
Yes, yes. Do we need to indicate size, or do we need to indicate anything about? We need to include that they must adhere to the EMC guidelines?
So they kind of do have to, because everything has to comply with all the other.
And no, yeah, that's true, even though it's exempt, that's true. Okay, well, then that's, it's covered then.
Right. So I think it covers it just to exempt them clearly, so that there's not any confusion at a later date of how to interpret that.
Okay, any other issues that we may have excluded or didn't think of? That you know of, Ms. Franklin?
Not that I have come across, that doesn't mean there won't, you know, when it gets to the council, they may have additional things that, you know, we've missed. And they will be able to add those at that time.
Does anybody have any last questions or issues with this draft?
I do.
Yes, sir, please.
G9F, if you want to turn to that. Got an extra word in there, shall, is use.
Can you tell us the page?
Yeah, what page is that?
13. Well.
You're to comply with the removal of provisions of.
Shall just needs to be deleted.
Okay.
I think, is that what you're saying, Commissioner Brown? I think we just need to delete shall, is that accurate?
Yeah, the first shall.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. The, on the second line, the section shall three times within three months.
Yes.
Take that shall out and it.
Got it.
Works.
What page is that? If you'd be so kind?
Excuse me?
Page?
Oh, I'm looking.
Very faint, yeah.
On page 10?
Signs which flash or blink, that one?
Yeah, where it says, signs which flash or blink or which have varying intensity of illumination of less than three seconds. Why don't we make that, why isn't that 10 seconds, which matches over?
Right, we talked about that.
Yeah.
So this is a little different than the changing of the display. This is, the three seconds was actually the safety recommendation from, I want to say, I'm not, I'm not sure, so I don't want to say. But we reviewed safety recommendations from state highway and other various agencies. And it was universally agreed that flashing or blinking that happens in a less than three-second cycle is distracting two drivers and can cause accidents.
10 seconds would be less distracting.
So the display staying up for 10 seconds, right, is less distracting, yes. So you're saying, why don't we say if it's less than 10 seconds?
Elsewhere, we talk about 10 seconds or signs and the display has to show for 10 seconds. Why don't we just make this 10 seconds and be the same?
Okay.
And I just want to make sure that's making it safer.
So if it, if it cannot, less than 10, yes, it would make it safer.
Okay.
I feel like this is just for if something is flashing.
Yes.
Which does feel like it could cycle fast. I mean, I don't have a problem with 10, I just wonder if that gives people the, the advertising spunk that they're hoping for. Because I do feel like a flash happening every three seconds isn't the same thing as like words scrolling across that you're like trying to figure out what they, you know what I mean?
Because when we're talking about flashing, we're just talking about lights. We're not talking about words, we're not talking about anything other than just a light flashing, isn't that?
Well, we're talking about any type of flashing, but that includes lights.
Well, maybe you want.
Oh, so it could be like the words flashing? So as long as it wasn't scrolling, but if it.
Right.
Like if an open sign was going at three-second intervals.
Right.
What else would do that, but I'm trying to.
But it can. This is obviously confusing because I know we've talked about it before.
Right.
He brings it up again, so I think we need to clarify this to make it more precise or, as he says, make it the same or something. Because I know I've wondered the same thing about that. Signs which flash or blink or which have varying intensity of illumination or on less than a three-second cycle are prohibited. So what, how is that different than a, an EMC that is 10 seconds or less? How, what is the, what is the distinguishing feature between these two? Again, let's just say it one more time.
Because this applies to things that aren't EMCs. So like your open sign.
Okay, okay, do we want to indicate that? Signs that are not considered EMCs, maybe we want to make that distinction. Not that that would probably make it any easier for you to understand.
It applies to EMCs too, though EMCs are regulated with that 10-second.
Right.
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 I don't think there's a problem with changing it to 10 seconds.
I mean, I guess also though, what I'm thinking, would any of like the Christmas lights that are coming into town? You know what I mean? Like those are thick, like if they're at 10 seconds, do you almost get the sense of a blink? I don't know, I'm just.
But they're not signs.
Okay, yeah, yeah, because those are, yeah, all right.
So if you, like, I guess if you had, it's really, it's really going to be mostly your open signs, right? You know, sometimes they have the neon that will flash, sometimes they like have the little.
Yeah.
Like the, that move, yes.
You mean like a, like a motion, like.
A motion of LEDs moving around outside.
So I just want to make sure I'm following. This area that we're looking at, it's not allowed. So right now, we're saying it can't be less than three seconds.
Right.
So Larry's saying we move it up from three seconds to 10 seconds. So that means any sign, flashing sign, less than 10 seconds is not allowed versus three seconds.
Yes.
Then it's no longer flashing or blinking.
But flashing signs aren't permitted anyway, this is just being very specific.
Say this again?
So flashing signs aren't being, so we have a new section that says flashing signs, you guys added, as just a statement. But I think, I think having this time definition of like, I personally don't want arguing with a sign owner saying like, well, what is, what is flashing me? We have a definition, right? But I think the seconds are useful for that.
Now I think I'm more confused.
So you're saying it, it is important to have the three seconds?
It's important to have something, 10 seconds is fine.
But do you think 10 seconds is too long?
It depends on whether you want signs like.
Flashing.
Right, having some level of flashing. You know, the EMC is changing and it's there for a long time. If you want a sign to go on for five seconds, off for five seconds, I mean, I.
So if you had a sign and you had twinkle lights around it or something?
Yes.
That's, you're not, that's not allowed in this situation, it's not allowed.
Yeah.
But if someone says those twinkling lights are Christmas.
If they're around words, though, it's going to be a sign.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, you know, that's a popular, well, I won't say popular, but I just, you know, that would be a nice way to attract somebody is with that twinkle light effect or whatever, but.
But if everyone's doing it, then.
Yeah, well, if everybody's doing it, then you go crazy, exactly.
Am I right that these are signs, so it's not when you're driving, I think it would be like mostly here. I know it would be elsewhere, but it's not like you're necessarily having to read and then think about the message. It's simply something that is garnering.
It's attracting you.
Right.
Attracting attention.
Right, it's attracting attention, but it's not requiring you, well, you might think, oh, I do need to go there, but I don't know that it's requiring as much thought as the EMCs. Because it's less of a verbal message and more of a subliminal, well, it's obviously out there, but it could also be subliminal. I don't, I don't know, but I just think anything that's safer.
I'm trying to think of how long three seconds is, it's quite a long time, actually, if you do it properly.
I mean, I can pull up the slideshow that has EMCs, not flashing, but.
Well, yeah, right, right.
Three seconds, you're barely at a flash. I mean, so, but, so in that way, then I'm also like, who cares? We can add it to 10 because you've kind of lost the.
Right, there's a lot of repetitiveness around this flashing because it's just really, really, really not allowed. But we, we've left multiple versions of it in every time we've discussed it. So.
It was easier if we just do uniform 10 seconds across the board.
If we do, that eliminates the blinking entirely.
Right.
For someone that's walking or changing a flat.
Well, I mean.
Can I ask a question? I'm, and I apologize, my mind is not as sharp today. We're saying that something's not allowed and then we're talking about what we're allowing?
Right, so flashing sign, it is a little convoluted, right? Because flashing signs aren't allowed, but we also left in the thing that says that they, they're not allowed if at a certain. Actually, what it is, is we left in the thing with the timeline and we added flashing signs.
So why not just get rid of, if we're, if there's no flashing signs, then there's no flashing signs. So three seconds or 10 seconds, we can get rid of that.
Right.
Well, this is where I was getting.
I think that, I think. So you're saying eliminate I entirely?
Yeah, because then it just says flashing sign.
Because flashing signs is a definition of flashing signs, right? Do we have a definition of flashing signs somewhere?
We do in the back.
Yes, we do. A sign whose artificial illumination is not kept constant in intensity at all times when in use and which exhibits flashing changes in light, color, direction, or animation. So with the definition in the front, I think it's obvious what flashing means. I, I mean, I think maybe we could eliminate I and.
Okay.
And then just keep in, I mean, keep in L, flashing signs, but take out I. What does everybody think about taking it out entirely, deleting I? Commissioner Han?
I agree.
Everybody, does anybody disagree and you agree?
Seems more consistent with the purpose of what.
Any, okay, what else, Commissioner Brown, you're on a roll?
H2 on page 14. Can you tell me what that means?
H2.
Off-premises signs except for?
Right.
Official traffic signs and other federal, state, county, or town government signs?
Yeah, I mean, except for those. What are, what are the off-premises signs that are allowed?
In the residential zone, no, off-premises signs are allowed.
And if you get to I2, off-premises signs in commercial districts, they're permitted as it shows in residential districts, which they're not permitted.
Right.
This is page 22.
At the standards prescribed therein, but there are no standards, so. So we've got a meaningless statement.
So 2A, certainly we can remove at the standards prescribed therein, but it does have meaning because it's still referring back to the government signs. Like, so it's saying the government signs are allowed. We could just repeat that here instead of referring back to the residential.
Yeah, I would, that would be better.
Okay, say, say what it is you want to do again, Commissioner Brown. You want to take out A entirely?
H2, I'd say none, except for official traffic signs and other.
Where's H2?
On page 14.
Something before, except.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes.
So take out the words except for, you want to take off off-premises?
No, I'm saying off-premises signs, colon, none.
No, no official.
Except for the other.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, anything with the underline on it, we added at the last meeting, that's.
Does anyone else think it'd be, I'm having some difficulty with the changes and reading it. I feel it would be easier to read if we had a cleaned-up version. I, I just.
We can't clean it up. You mean taking out all the lines?
You can't, you can't.
No, this is a graph, we have to keep it as is. Sorry about that, this is the way it has to be.
Okay.
So let's go back, I'm sorry. Number two, off-premises signs, colon, none except for official traffic signs and other federal, state, county, or town government signs. You just want to add the word none.
Yeah.
I'm on the right page.
That's on page 14. Okay, I'm sorry, so then now let's go to 2A then. So on 2A, did you want to make any change on 2A?
I would just put exactly what we had here in.
None except for official traffic signs.
Yeah.
Just repeat it instead of refer back to it.
All signs permitted in. Permit required. Oh, I see what you're saying. So for 2A on page 15, you want to say? Permit we, no, let's see here.
I'm going to say none except for official traffic signs and other federal, state, and county, other signs. So you don't have to go back.
Because it's such a short sentence, repeating it doesn't really create any issues.
So what do you suggest?
No, I think that makes sense because, because repeating it doesn't create any issues because it's a short little sentence.
So it should read all signs, okay, you read it the way it should be. I'll go ahead.
Two off-premises signs. A, none except for official traffic signs and other federal, state, county, or town government signs. B, signs used for directing patrons, members, or audiences to service clubs, et cetera.
Certainly seems cleaner.
I think it's less words, actually.
Fewer words. All signs permitted in resident, none except for official, okay. Okay, got it. Okay, good, what else? Commissioner Han, what do you think down there? Do you have anything that you're?
No comments at this time.
Commissioner Grayson, what do you think?
I'm with Commissioner Han.
And Commissioner Larson Weaver, what do you think?
No, no comments.
Okay, so it looks like what I'm seeing is, is that everything, it sounds like everybody is okay with everything except with. Oh, I know what I was going to go through and talk about. It's page two, actually, the A-frame sign. On number two, A-frames, A-frame sign, a type of freestanding portable temporary sign consisting of two faces connected and hinged at the top and whose message is targeted to pedestrians. But as I'm seeing at the one right out here, they're trying to also target the cars, the automobiles. Do we want to add in automobiles or just, just make it pedestrians? Just because that's what the typical term is used. But I know that they're using them for both, both automotive traffic and pedestrian traffic.
It also doesn't need to even say who it's tar, like rather than saying pedestrians or cars, can't we just say hinged at the top?
Yeah.
That's the end.
But I get rid of. But I think originally, an A-frame was supposed to be like a sandwich board right along a sidewalk, right? And the interior next to the building, not on the, the middle section between this road and the sidewalk like they've got it over here.
Right, so that, there's a policy question, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is, are the signs that are, that are, I think those are T-signs or, or I, but regardless, same thing.
Right, uh-huh, right.
Do you want to allow signs that are targeted at cars, right? Or do you want them to not be allowed, right? Like, so those signs wouldn't be allowed?
You don't have like a whole lot of pedestrian, I mean.
Actually, the T-frames don't reference pedestrians, so the T-frames would be able to be targeted at cars.
A-frames, the town uses them all the time to notify us when they're flushing the pipes. Would this refer to them too, or no? They would be exempt? Because it's not pedestrians that they are targeting, it's the people in the cars coming in and out of the neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's where it gets a little confusing as well.
Aren't we just in the definition section?
Well, we are, but.
No, that's the function.
We're in the definition section. I think the question is, do we, as Commissioner Han suggested, stop at top or continue?
We stop at top.
Well.
Put a period at top and eliminate the rest.
And I've got a question. I know this is a little bit specific, but. Does it have to be hinged on the top? What if somebody hinges it another way? I mean, could it be side hinges in any way? Like it's A frame, but they have like. I'm just.
Well, I think this is just a definition of what is typically considered an A frame. And I think.
Okay.
To be an A frame.
Okay.
It's got to be an A. If it's like this, then you've got a different kind of sign.
Okay. Well, I was thinking of like arms. It would still be the gable, but.
Yeah, I think that would just be a different. And if it, you know.
I don't know that anyone's going to care, but it just hit me.
Yeah. So does anybody is anybody concerned that, you know, we could run amok with these signs up and down the roads, sidewalks? I mean, will this because it's exempt, basically, will we see a lot more of them because they're going to be used for both vehicular and pedestrian traffic if we don't put a specification in there? I mean, this had pedestrians for a reason. I think it's because originally we thought of them as a sandwich board kind of a thing. But these are not that.
We use it in Richfield Station too for the for the food trucks.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would say what people are going to do with signs is what they're currently doing with signs, right? I don't. Like, there's a lot of signs that that are prohibited. And we've put a pin in code enforcement because of it or because of trying to modernize this. So I don't anticipate. When the new regulations come that people would do different things. I think people are doing what they're doing.
Man, could it be like graffiti? Once you see a little bit, you're going to see a lot more of it. I don't know. I mean, I guess the concern I have is could we see a proliferation of them all over this this area? And could it look like a lot of sign clutter at the end of the day?
Wouldn't that be prohibited in other ways? Because you're limited with the number of signs you can have off the like, we've done other things to prevent that. So we don't have to decide in a definition who it's appealing to.
But the total number of square footage.
Are you saying all of the businesses along this street?
Well, and it could be by it could be all up and down 260. Yeah, it could be all 261. Anybody who has a business.
That many businesses.
No, I mean, there aren't. But, you know, could the ones that we have.
The commercial areas to very relatively small. There aren't that many businesses.
Well, we have the town businesses up in up on the hill. We've got, you know, I mean, I think you don't notice them maybe, but, you know, I think newbies coming to town would notice them if you had a whole bunch of these little signs up and down the street. I mean, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of somebody who's new to the town, who's never looked at, and they come in. What would they consider as sign clutter? Would that be it?
So just to be clear, a permit is required for one A frame or T frame sign. That's on page.
Oh, okay, good.
This is just how we're defining them. It doesn't. There's all sorts of regulations later on that say. So it's not like if we say it's for a pedestrian or a car, it's going to change what we've said later about how many signs and where you can have the signs and how big the signs and how many signs per business, you know?
So the A frame sign is even though it's a temporary sign, will require a permit.
In a commercial zone.
In a commercial zone. Right, exactly. So that means if you wanted to use it in the HOA, you don't need a permit to show, you know. Whatever. Whatever reason.
Um, let me just.
So it does be permit.
So let me get to the. Signs permitted in residence.
Are.
I suppose it would probably be considered a temporary sign, not well, is it exceeding 12 square feet? I'm not really sure. Think about that. No, it's not.
So would we decide? Do we decide that? What did you say? What did? Just do some math. Page 15. One A. Okay, so on C of the top, one A frame or T frame sign is permitted. Shall not exceed 12 square feet.
That's three feet by four feet. Most of them, it looks like, but that's the biggest A frame that is manufactured. So I think it would be allowed in the residential area without an issue. And because in the commercial area, it's specifically called out separately. It needs the permit in the commercial.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
I guess if everyone decided that they wanted to put up that type of sign, that is what you would see, but.
Well, I mean, I just think of worst case scenarios because.
Just like any other kind of when you have contiguous businesses and they all want to do a certain type of sign. I think that's just the nature of. The town like that they're allowed to have.
Obviously, I'm just saying, is that is that okay with everybody that we would allow that right next to the road all up and down? Let's just say everybody decided that was the most effective way to put a sign up. I don't I doubt that they would.
Right.
You know, practical times, I guess we'd go, no, we don't. But they could.
Right.
All the way up and down and including by and, you know, whatever. Is that a problem? And and. Or do we, you know, when we look at an A, when I think of an A frame or I always think of it being adjacent to the building, not right next to the road. But it can be right next to the road as we see it here.
It can't be in the right of way. Those those are still going to have to get moved in closer.
Those are still in the right of way. So, okay. On premises signs opposed to those are not on premises.
They're still.
Right.
If you're on premises.
Right.
Okay. So do we want to go back to number two and eliminate after Commissioner Han says after the word top? Do we want to take out and whose message is targeted to pedestrians?
Yes.
Y'all agree to that? Whose message is targeted to pedestrians? Okay. So if we review the changes, if we go to page two, we've taken out the ending of the sentence on number two, which is and whose message is targeted to pedestrians. And if we go to age. Page 10, we go to. Eliminating I signs which flash or blink or which have varying intensity of illumination on less than a three second cycle are prohibited. Then we've gone to page 12 and deleted the word the first shall. Failure to comply with the removal provisions of this section three times within a three month period shall result in blah, blah, blah. Then we go to page 14 and we add the word none except for. Correct. And then on page 15, we add, we just, we are eliminating. Let's see, what do we eliminate? We're eliminating.
All signs permitted in subsection.
We're limiting all of. No, we're not eliminating. Are we eliminating all of that?
Everything that's in section in 2A is deleted and replaced with none except for official traffic signs and other federal, state, county.
But you're going to keep residential districts, right? No, not going to keep residential.
Because it's just, it's taken the text that was in residential districts and putting it here. So we don't need to refer back to it because it's saying the same thing.
That's number 15, page 15. And then is there anything else? I think that was it, correct?
The other one was on page 10, which is to add, and I've made it number, changed the numbering, made it number three, official scoreboards, scoreboards located on government owned property. So all the other numbers shifted.
So you went under G exemptions.
Yes.
And you added scoreboards. Et cetera.
But I put it as number three because we were talking about government signs sort of in that area and then shifted all the other numbers appropriately.
And then if everybody goes to the very back on page, I guess it would be 23. Ms. Franklin did a lovely service by basically giving us a reference table that goes along with our definitions. We asked for that, actually. And we were talking, what do you all think about having her include? I don't know if it's going to be too much work, having her include. The regulations, the on the right hand side, that column, add those to the definitions themselves that if you're looking at definitions, you automatically see where they're located in the ordinance. Or do you think this reference table is all they need? Which, how do you? How do you want to look at this? Or does it matter? This is such a great reference table.
Really is.
Don't you think this is a nice feature?
All they need personally.
Do you think this should go in the front? Or what do you think this reference table should go?
I think the front, the front. Because it makes it easier to just sort of wade through easily some of what's not applicable to your situation.
Franklin is thinking.
It's good.
Thinking and I want to ask Madam Clerk what if there's a way to put it, you know, when Civic Plus does it, often the table is like an attachment that you click on separately. Is there a way, like if we put this in the text, would Civic Plus keep it in the text? So the flow of, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, that's what that's all I'm thinking. Okay.
I think that really helps the consumer.
The it's a user friendly.
Yes.
Draft ordinance. I think this really, I think anybody can go in there and just.
Yeah.
Just more easily figure out whether a sign would be applicable. Okay, so any more thoughts about this before we actually create a motion and actually put this thing to bed? We're moving on to the town council. And I'd like somebody here to cleverly go through and make the motion and identify all the changes that we've just referred to, who can do that. And in the motion include that we're going to then transmit this to the town council. Who would be really clever enough to do this?
I think Mr. Brown should do it since.
You can actually just reference. You can reference the changes just noted in your motion.
Would you like to do this?
No, I'm not because.
Commissioner Han doesn't.
I will attempt to do it.
I bet she's got it already figured out. Okay.
No, I do not. Okay. I make a motion for the signs regulation to 90 dash 22. To make the changes that we just discussed. Do I need to list the following pages or am I good? All right, that's it.
You don't need those pages. Okay.
All right.
We'll trust you on that. You just reviewed. The chair just stated.
The chair just reviewed.
I second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Any discussion? Questions? Okay, all in favor of moving the sign draft sign ordinance to the town council with all the changes and additions that we've we referred to just prior to this motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We did. You did a great job, Ms. Franklin. We really appreciate it because there was a lot of work here. I know you put a lot of work into this and we kept going back and forth a lot. So thank you for that.
You all put a lot of work into it, too.
Well, I like what you did, sitting there in front of the TV trying to do all this stuff. Okay, so.
TV with this one.
Okay, so we're going to move on to something that is really important. Discussion on home occupation. And I know Commissioner Brown's going to go, why are we discussing this? And maybe we go ahead and get a staff report and then we'll we'll find out why we're we're doing this right now.
So. I should start by saying it's more complicated than home. It turns out to be more complicated than just home occupation. And this is why the chair was just saying what I was doing in front of the TV because it is. What seems to have happened is that the planning commission adopted a comprehensive plan and then initiated a comprehensive rezoning. And somewhere in the process of that rezoning. Some of the intent and consistency with the comprehensive plan. Got lost. Now, I think it's possible that the planning commission did their work and then it went to the council and the council made changes, which they have the right to do. The concern that. This is a concern that's been coming up is there's this home occupation. So people are saying, okay, I got an office in my home and can I have a permit? And I have to say, no, you can't have a permit for your office in your home or whatever you're doing in your home. Certainly, there are things that the planning commission never intended for people to do in their home. But. Businesses being run from the home that have zero impact on traffic or visual or anything of that nature. My understanding is that was never the planning commission's intention to prevent those businesses from existing. And so, but that is what the ordinance does specifically in the RV. One, I think the RV one and the RV two might have gotten a little mixed up. But let me, I have a big table now, not just the one you guys have. So give me a sec. So it's no longer permitted. In any of the residential districts, neither RV one nor RV two.
Where does it say then?
So if you are in the zoning ordinance and you go to the land use table. Item number 60 is customary home occupation with one employee.
Do you have a page?
It's the table in the back.
If you look at the table that I have, it shows that like the green is the changes I was recommending and the black is what it currently exists as. I can also. I can bring up the land use table for you guys to look at. Oh, do I don't know how to do that.
Know if you got your new copy or not.
So Sarah, this is coming up. So I understand. So like any kind of like solopreneur kind of person who's working from out of their home is technically in violation. Yes.
But can I just add one thing? We. You may want to help me on this one, but three or four years ago, the RV two, which is the area right, and you may want to bring up that map to show everybody.
Oh, yes.
Two is.
I've got that.
RV two and now part of RV one. But RV two was always. At least in the early days when I've been on the planning commission, allowed to have more than just an in-home office. They could have a little beauty shop if they had a one stall beauty shop or they could have a, you know, the shoe repairman. They could have a little bit more extensive business than just the home office like what you would have. They would have people come to, I'm sorry, they would have. Sorry, they would have people come to their business in the RV two. That was always, do you remember how that was?
Yeah, so this table is a little complicated.
And we look on the table and it's not permitted.
Yeah.
And that there's so something happened between, you know, one day and another when it got onto that chart.
Right. So that's it's also not, it's just not even there, the home occupation with more than two employees. I don't know if you guys can see this. This is the complicated table. It's hard to follow. But home occupation used to be allowed as conditional in this RV. There used to be just an RV zone. Now there is RV one and RV two. And so the home occupation you're speaking of was conditional, the previous zoning ordinance, but it's not even.
Right.
Something that's allowed at all.
Wasn't permitted at all now.
Yeah, it's not even mentioned anymore. And so the customary home occupation with the one employee went from conditional to not permitted. And I'm going to take this headache inducing table away. And I'm going to take this headache-inducing table away, give you your zoning.
There you go. Can you enlarge it a little bit, or no?
I can enlarge it.
There you go, there, it's good.
I guess I have one question, which is, when the comprehensive plan went to town council, was the, did this, like, maybe get lost in translation? Or was there an intentional decision for this? Like, are we, have they already had this discussion and made this choice? And now we're like, just bringing it back up, or, do you know?
So, I, I wasn't here for the comprehensive plan or the comprehensive rezoning. So I don't know what happened when the council looked at the comprehensive rezoning. But I do know that, that that's where the changes that we're questioning came from. And that, once I started digging, which is what that complicated table is about, I found that some of it, it's consistency with the comprehensive plan is possible, but a bit of a stretch in some places. And so it's possible that the council wanted to do it and asked if it could be made consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the planner said, well, yes, right? Because there's some level of interpretation. But because we're having these permitting problems, and we, I started looking at this, the chair, and bringing up these concerns, she was saying, I don't remember this. I think it's worth having this discussion again, because some of these questions, some questions, especially around home occupations, have come from the council now. And so, if we can make this more consistent with the comprehensive plan, then I think it's worth looking at.
I agree, I just wasn't, I just wanted to make sure we weren't like, about, I mean, but granted, we have a very different town council at this time than that time. But you know, I was like wondering if, if there was going to be support if we did this, or if they, that was an intention.
So, sorry. So I, yeah, I think it, it's tricky, and I'm not trying to overrule anyone, I'm just looking from an implementation perspective and saying, there are some concerns here. When I bring them to the chair, she says, I don't remember us doing that. So that's why we think that, that's why that change got made. And since those concerns are now coming up from staff, even though it's different staff-
Yeah.
I think it's worth revisiting, because some, some of the questions can have legal implications, too. So.
I don't remember.
Yeah, that, so that's what, okay. So it seems like a little bit of a-
switch. Something happened.
They didn't get into the documents.
Okay. Because I definitely know that RV2 in particular was always a more liberal form of the home occupation than, let's say, uh, the L, let's see, any of the others.
Again, I can try and make, I mean, once I make it bigger, you're not going to be able to see, but, um-
I don't even remember the RV1s having that same, if you're in the RV1, and do you remember that ever being part of your zoning?
The other thing is-
I remember what?
No.
The liberal interpretation of a home office, that you could have a hairdresser next to you.
I don't remember it ever being discussed in, in this. I would say that RV1 wants to be-
Then RV1 and RV2, right now, we're identifying those two as having similar zoning qualifications there. So basically, um, what, I mean, what you're recommending here, then, let's, let's go ahead and, and take a look at what your recommendation is. If you look on page one of this home occupation, you've taken this from the current zoning, have you, at the current code?
Yeah, which, this is here, is the current code.
And what you've done is just changed it to conditional for the RV1 and RV2. But the RLD, lower density, middle density, high densities are all not permitted, and, as well as RPC. And then you have the, of course, the commercial zones are all conditional, so that would make sense. And then the RC is not permitted.
I think it, I made it conditional in all the residential zones, but added more intense conditions. So, so because right now, if you're in the RLD, and you are a planner working out of your home, right?
Yeah.
You're technically in violation of code.
Right.
But are you really having any impact on anyone? And does the planning commission really have a problem with that? It certainly isn't inconsistent with the comprehensive plan.
Right.
So, I, I think I set, and I'm, I don't have the agenda here, but there's a, there's the conditions that exist for the commercial districts for customary home occupation. And then there's a second set of conditions that I created for the res, our, RLD, RMD, RHD. And I think RV1. Because RV1 is supposed to be mainly residential.
Yes.
And that's where the other issue that we're going to need to talk about comes up, because somehow, when it got adopted, the RV1 allows all the things, and the RV2 does not.
Yeah, and that absolutely doesn't make any sense.
So, so there's, there's more to come with this.
Can you refresh my memory, R1, which, which is, which area is RV1 and which is 2?
RV1 is here, I think there's some a little further. Do we have an RV1 down here?
No.
Okay.
Those are all, it's all up by the-
Okay. And then, so RV2 is right here. And here's a little RV1 here, here's some RV1 here. RV1 here.
In a residential planning community.
RV1.
Why wouldn't we want to extend the same rights, privileges, whatever, to our low-density, medium-density, and high-density areas?
See, I think the-
And why are they different?
In my opinion, and it's probably not true for the RV1, because they're pretty high-density in that area, too. But parking is an issue, so if you have, the RV2 has more, I always thought it was just RV2 that had the more liberal standards, but obviously-
The RV1, not RV2.
The problem is parking in this town. So if you start having people parking who are coming to the business-
Right.
That's where we get into a little bit of a problem, unless you've got extra parking on your lot, if your lot is a little bit larger or something. You don't want to have any offs, off, on-street-
We're going to restrict the low, medium, and high-density areas. But we're not going to restrict RV1 and RV2.
That's what we have to discuss. I mean, but that would be changed. That would be something brand-new for the, uh, all of those residential districts, because they were always not permitted, even, you know, as long as I've been here. It's, uh, it's been not permitted. So that would be something entirely new.
So, just to make sure, Richfield Station in Bayview Hills is RPC, correct?
Yes.
And it's NP for there, too?
Yes.
So how does that work? Because I'm in Richfield Station, and there is a lot of-
Oh, sure.
There's a lot of home businesses in there. And here, it's saying it's not permitted.
Right, so, so the issue came up, because most people probably aren't asking for a permit, right? Um, and there was a person who was trying to use it as an education component-
On the rules.
Of how to follow the rules with their fam, their children, right? And so, um, so I had to tell these children, no, to a use that doesn't really have an impact on anyone. And so, it, it felt a little odd, right? Here you are, trying to follow the rules, there's lots of people doing something, right? And, but it's difficult to enforce, because if you're just working out of your home, no one really knows, right? Unless you need a permit to operate, to sell whatever you're doing, or whatever, if you need a license, then you might need a permit. But if you don't need a permit, then maybe you're just working out of your home, and nobody knows.
Which wouldn't be different from anybody, like, everybody who works from home now, because-
Technically-
They're allowed to-
No.
Nobody's allowed to work from home?
Right, technically, you're, you're-
I wasn't sure if it was just businesses weren't allowed to be run from homes, but if like-
I mean, you're right, if it's not a business ring run from home, but you have an office-
Yeah.
-in your home.
But, I mean, the developers all put offices in the homes.
I, I just think in the post-COVID, like, how many people are working from home to have this regulation that means that nothing is ridiculous?
But a home office, but a home office, I think we were talking about different things here.
Right.
Home office, nobody should need a permit for a home office. That seems like-
Yeah, they're technically not allowed.
But that, you know, I, I don't think it's, we've ever talked about home offices as not being allowed anywhere, that just seems a little silly. But what we were talking about with the RV1 and 2 was the home business, where you had the, you had customers coming to the, the business. And that's the difference.
On, on the town's website, I haven't looked at it recently, but it used to say, there are 30 or 40, I forget the number, of businesses that were in these areas.
Yeah, local businesses, a part of it.
But they can't be, I mean, by, by the code that we enacted.
There's an error somewhere, because this was never, there were, this was never like this, that, you know, a few years ago, so something happened. But, um, we definitely need to look at it and make some changes, and that's what we have to talk about, is how you want to change these.
Also, was it one of those things that almost didn't come up? Because you're thinking, well, nobody would ever go get a permit to be able to, like, work from home? And so, do you know what I mean? Like, because you wouldn't need a permit, then we were restricting the thing that we don't mean to be restricted?
So what is the difference between you working, well, what is the difference between Commissioner Hahn working from home and Commissioner Weaver working from home, right? The difference is Commissioner Hahn is working for someone else, and Commissioner Weaver is working for herself, right? But functionally, from a zoning perspective, and from an impact on the town perspective, is there really any functional difference? And so that's kind of what I'm saying, from the zoning perspective, it, as long as there are these extra conditions in those residential areas, where you don't ha, I, I, because I have this pulled up, I don't have the other one in front of me. But I'm, I'm remembering what I wrote, and it's like, all the same conditions, plus, there are no employees, there is no additional traffic, there are no customers served in the home, and no, like, large mailing and shipping out of the home. It's like something like, impact on traffic, you guys have it in front of you. And so that's, that's the point I'm making, is from the comprehensive plan, plan perspective, which is, these areas should be focused on single-family homes, that's accurate. And with so many people working from home, you're basically restricting the same thing for one person and not for another.
So then shouldn't it be all of the RLD, RMD, like, all of those should move to conditional and not, not permitted?
That's what, that's what it should say in your packet.
I thought the one, you had just showed a change for RV1 and RV2.
So that's my old version. Give me a second here, and I'll pull up the packet.
And I would imagine that somebody could create, if, if they had to create a corporation, right?
Yeah.
And then you're employed by the corporation that you created.
But again, I think, I think we're not talking about the same things. What RV2 was special about it, is that you could actually have a business where you had traffic coming back and forth to the, the business.
Right.
Whereas a home office doesn't require traffic. You're just taking your, you know, part of your house, and you're turning it into whatever, you know, desk, you got a desk and a computer. But the, the concern was, in some of these, like, the, um, the medium-sized, like, in my area, for example, people would be concerned about the parking and the traffic on these, you know, our streets are so narrow. And to have a FedEx truck coming up, we had a guy in our little, you know, we have a house right behind us with an alleyway. He kept having Amazon and FedEx trucks come and pick up all of his, he was running a business out of there. And it damaged this little, you know, the alleyways that we don't know who really owns? Well, it really damaged this little alleyway, because the heavy truck kept going up and back and down. So the question is, um, what conditions do we put on? What, you know, what will we allow? And, uh, do we want everybody, even in the high-density, to be able to have people come to their locations to go to a hair salon in that house?
Right, so-
That's the difference.
I didn't, I didn't show the conditionals in the, in this table here in the memo you have, but I created a second category, that's this one, where it says, this is, this is something I'm recommending, right? Conditional use in the LDR, RLD, RMD, RHD, RPC, RC, subject to the requirements of the district we're located. Most of this is the same as what's above here, but there are some exceptions. this, instead of, it, it, not just that it's secondary to the use, but it's conducted entirely within the dwelling or accessory building. So there's nothing happening outside in the RLD, RMD, RHD, RPC, and RCs.
Can you give me an idea what you mean there?
Um, so, in these other zones, it's just that the occupation is conducted, oh, no, I'm sorry, it's, it's the same, I don't know why I thought that. But basically, you're not, you're not running a car repair, or anything that requires you to be outside working, right? Some people, I don't know if you, I don't think you guys have this here, but there are other places where people are, they're buying a car, they're fixing the car, they're selling the car, they're doing it all from their home. It's not a lot of cars, but it's two or three extra cars in their driveway. That wouldn't be allowed, because it has to be entirely within the dwelling.
So if you have a car detailing business, and they bring the car to you and drop it off at your house, that's not allowed?
Unless you're in a garage entirely.
This is for aesthetics, I would take it, and traffic as well.
Not just aesthetics, but the, the comprehensive plan is calling for residential districts to be residential in nature, and feel residential in nature. So to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, that, that is not residential, right? That's a more industrial-type use.
Got it.
So, okay, so that's there. The other thing, so the, one of the things I did add was, all employed are family members residing in the dwelling, right? So this is you. You're not employing other, you're not having an employee come to your house every day, and add one more car on the street, and more traffic, right?
Is that reasonable?
I mean, is that reasonable? Do most people who have a office in their home have an employee coming into their home to the office?
I mean, I think it's possible.
I mean, I'm just-
So let's say someone's an eBay reseller, sorry. And they have someone that comes in and helps them package up things, let's say, or make labels, or get values. I mean, is it-
Well, now you also, you now have two employees, not one employee, right? Because you're an employee, and then you have an employee.
You know, that, then, then you think, if you're a sole proprietor, how are you an employee? I mean, an employee would be employed by a third party, you're just the owner.
For, for government documents, I am considered an employee of my own business, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. There's been such a blur of lines since COVID.
COVID, and everybody working from home.
And remote, and, yeah.
But there's a difference when you buy a house in RV2 or RV1, and you buy it with the purpose of having your, let's just say, I keep going back to the hair salon, because that's where you have a customer come, maybe once an hour. In fact, I, my hairdresser used to be in her house, actually, now that I think about it, Dunkirk. But, um, um, the question is, now, you didn't put in here anything about parking on-site. You're allowing them to park on the street. So- On number H. Besides required parking for the dwelling unit, additional parking located to the side or rear yard shall be provided as follows, one space for each non-resident employed.
That's the existing. So that's, those are the conditions, those are the existing conditions. So the stuff that's in black.
So did you change that in number two?
I changed that in the green, because, because in the black, you can have one full-time non-resident employee on premises, right? So in the, the black, it talks about besides required parking at, in the dwelling. But if you look in, um, in the green, right? So, towards the bottom is where you get to get the new stuff, right? No article or commodity, is that one?
Well, you changed C, too. You took it from, you gave that- Well, you changed C too. You took it from, you gave that except that one full-time, non-resident employee. Now you're making it all family.
Right. I changed C, then, um.
The parking's still the same whether it's family or not. I mean, if you have one, am I wrong?
Well, your family's there anyway, right? So if you have five kids and all of them are teenagers with licenses and everyone has a car, then you might.
Some, maybe, maybe the spouse goes to work or one spouse goes to work and then there's now, there's an empty space. I mean.
See, the problem in, in our area, at that area, the campgrounds, whatever, up in that area, is that a lot of these cottages use the streets as their only parking area. So if your next door neighbor starts needing the extra parking area, this is why it was never allowed in that area. Or the, for the, for the businesses that are more than just a home, you know, a home office. I'm not talking about the, I think there should be a distinction made between the home office and the commercial business where you're actually having people come to your house.
And I think.
It's a whole different type of business.
I think that, and I think that maybe like what, what would not be acceptable where you are, let's say, parking might be different in another area.
Well, that's true, but even the roads are such that, you know, if you have two people parking, it's only barely able to get one car down the main road.
I'm thinking about like in the, in Bayview Hills, and I don't know what it's like in Richfield, but you know, they've got visitor parking. I mean, I, I don't know that people are.
I mean, help me understand this. The roads are public, people can park there no matter what, right? So how can we restrict telling them in a business, you can't have somebody come and park on the street, which is public?
Business, that's how.
Well, I mean, that's the question, how this little tiny town with limited parking and with houses that don't have garages and driveways. That's what we as a planning commission have to figure out how to accommodate everything and not, not.
If there's no parking, there's.
Right. I mean, it's the same thing when you're in the city and they all fill up. You have to walk aways and park.
But do we want to add to the congestion by allowing in certain areas? Do we want to allow more congestion?
Well, to me, it's kind of like in Annapolis, you know, where you want to park, but it says this is, this section is for residents holding, you know.
Well, then you go into permit parking. I mean, if you want to get into permitted parking, that's another issue.
No, I know. I'm just saying though, that sometimes there's a way.
Well, I mean, but, or do we need to have it in every area? I don't know. I mean, that before it was really just the RV area that allowed these extra uh, commercial ventures where you could have people come to your house. It wasn't allowed in my area. I mean, I know specifically that then that's why I, we talked about this because I saw it one day in that chart change and I go, what happened? You know, something changed. But it was always, um, just home offices alone were allowed. I mean, I never remember that ever being an issue. And then the home occupation where you have the business was only in the RV two. And maybe RV one, but I was really, I think in RV two.
So I don't, I wasn't here when we did, when, when they did the, um, the comprehensive plan, but I can tell you, I know that there are numerous businesses in Richfield Station.
Home occupations.
What do you mean, people coming to the house or like a daycare or?
Daycares are allowed everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, I'm pretty sure there's daycares. I'm pretty sure there's dog walking businesses or they bring the dogs over and drop them off for them to watch them. Um, I think there's grass cutters. I mean, there are numerous businesses that are in there. And I think there is, yeah. So, and that's why I'm saying when I'm looking at this and it says that RPC, it's, it's not allowable. I'm like, wait, there's no way that when we went through talking about this, I would have agreed to that just because I know what's going on in, in my community.
In real life.
Well, just one clarification, you've got two lists here. List number one and list number two. And list number two has RPC, low density, medium density. But you didn't change the grid on.
Yeah, I didn't change.
She, she knew that, yeah.
Yes.
Under RPC, for example, it should say conditional.
Right.
Conditional would be the second list.
Right. And so I, I didn't modify this memo from last time because there, we've, there's more, right? There's more than just this that we have to deal with. And I've been reading through that more, but I don't have everything for you. Yeah.
Can you give us a hint what the more is?
Sure. It's that big table that I had up and where did that go?
And you want to know? Yeah, I'm like, because I feel like I keep hearing reference to this table, this big thing you've had to read through. So what is that?
Let's see.
What is that?
Did I, did I get rid of?
Is that your screensaver?
Well, you're talking about the table that is specific on.
This table right here that I keep bringing up.
It goes into all the different occupations, basically.
So what this is, is this is your current zoning. This is the zoning you had before, the comprehensive rezoning. Now I have all these little notes to myself and I've been going through and identifying. Right? So, um, if you see where, um, this highlighted is, it means there's a potential issue, right? In the RV two, you can't have a library, museum, community set, like, did you mean that? Did you mean to do that? But also like over here in the RV one, you can conditionally have a clinic, but you can't conditionally have it in the RV two, and I know you didn't mean to do that. Right?
Right.
So, so I'm going through this and then there's a bunch of stuff in the RPC is a little complicated because RPC is technically an overlay that is supposed to apply to new new areas that are residential plan communities. And so if you say that you can't do any of this stuff, if you have a, a new RPC come in, then you can't allow it to have any mixed use and was that the intention? And is that really, it's not necessarily consistent with the comprehensive plan. So those ones are still highlighted for me to look through. But, but these are my notes from this big document, which is taking a long time to evaluate and then compare each section to the comprehensive plan to determine if what is inconsistent is actually consistent with the comprehensive plan or not.
Oh, definitely shed some light on.
Does that help explain?
But to be, to, to, to be explained further.
So the new, the new area, would that be an existing, like for Richfield Station? Would that be where the developer wants to build new houses that would fall under this? Or would it be another house outside that is, there's no house already on the land?
Right. So the RPC is, is technically going to be kind of like a critical area overlay, like an overlay on top of another area. So if you annexed an area that was not developed and someone came in with the subdivision plan and that wanted the RPC overlay, that's what it's supposed to be. So there is, there is an issue with that as well.
Let's go back to, okay, let's go back to page two. Page two was going to replace page one. Is that what I'm seeing here? Or you don't have a line through it though, but on the separate one, you're going to have both then, you would have one and two.
Right. So you would have, and I'm, and so you would have a set of conditions for RV one, RV two, NC, TC, PC, MC. Right? So your commercial districts would have one set of regulations that would allow for parking, additional people to park and come in and for you to have retail sales or whatever it is in that location. Whereas in your residential district, you can't have retail sales. You can't have additional employees. You can't have additional people coming in. So that is consistent with the comprehensive plan because it keeps, keeps it residential. But it allows people to operate these smaller businesses out of their homes. So that's what the two different sets of conditions were for. And so I've kind of highlighted, I started highlighting the, um, the differences. Um, let's see if I can. You probably won't be able to see them if I put them both up, but I will try.
Okay, so. This. What are we doing? Like we see this, this mess or whatever. And so like what, what do we do with this information? Like what's the, what's the next steps for us as we can?
Or, did you want us to go through what we have right here and just say yea or nay, we're looking at the right, right direction of going in with these two different, uh, you know, the uh, customary home occupation versus the, or, or the residential versus the non-residential, whatever you call it. Did you want us to go through and just say yea or nay to that right now, or how do you want us to look at this?
So I think initially, right, when I first sent this to you and we didn't have a chance to discuss it, the idea was say yea or nay, we move on, we push this to the town council and we move forward. Then when I started delving in and seeing that there's more issues than just this issue, I think that what we should do is let me finish this analysis, bring you a whole memo with everything. But I also think we should be doing this concurrently with the coastal resiliency because I don't want to lose it.
Yeah.
Um, so if everyone agrees that there are problems that need to be resolved, then I will outline what all those problems are and present you with a resolution to them. While also working on coastal resilience.
Okay, yeah, that's what, because I think all of us are kind of like, huh. And I was like, okay, well, we've still got.
So there's what I started doing and then what happened once I got into.
Endora's box, right.
Okay, so we will go ahead and, uh, um, wait on this until next month to see what other fun information you have for us. Um, but right now it's, it's, it's interesting. I think we are headed in the right direction and trying to figure this out and get it straight. Okay, let's move on to the next one, which is our, our overview of the coastal resiliency recommendation. Are you ready, Ms. Franklin? Go right ahead.
Let me just put this into a. By Chumoty, it's a little bigger for you. Okay, so, um, the Chesapeake Beach Coastal Resiliency Plan was adopted in 2023. Uh, it has a lot of recommendations. Not all of them are zoning related, but I have pulled out the ones that are zoning related for us to discuss. This is sort of a timeline. I guess it's smaller. So the idea is that in, for the next two months, we'll evaluate the zoning changes and talk about the overlay zone. Uh, and then we'll start drafting new language and revising over the winter. Uh, and then we would hold a public hearing and send to town council for approval hopefully in the spring. We'll see how we go along with that. So I don't know if you guys all have the coastal resiliency plan. I'm not sure if that's in your packet anymore, but.
I think we are.
Yeah, well, that's right. We, we got it right there.
So in chapter four, um, there is a recommendation.
Page, oh, okay.
Yeah, I should have put the page numbers, but I did not. I apologize.
It's thirty-two.
So the strategic flood management and sustainable zoning or drainage. This recommends that the zoning ordinance be amended to map properties in the twenty-one hundred maps flood area to include certification by a professional engineer. To ensure that buildings can withstand storm surge associated with the town's projected sea level rise. So I think this ties back in, sort of references back over to the floodplain management ordinance, which is not zoning, but zoning can reference over to it for that requirement. That's pretty straightforward. Um, change except for the, the mapping piece, right? And so that's where we will get into the overlay, but not yet. Recommendation number four is to amend the zoning ordinance, including critical area regulations to require all stormwater management pack practices and techniques for developed or redevelopment projects be proven to be effective with the two point four foot rise in sea level assumed as the base condition. And so that again is a simple change once we have the mapping of the area, which is, there is mapping of the area, but we've got it incorporated into the zoning. Then this one didn't, I don't, I believe this is a number. I think it's in here. It says amend the zoning ordinance to prohibit from areas mapped in the twenty-one hundred flood area, all group homes, convalescent centers, nursing homes and hospitals. One of the other issues we found is that group harms just aren't permitted anyway, which is an issue. So, um, but we'll make sure that we keep them not permitted in this area and permit them where they need to be permitted. Recommendation number five, thoroughly evaluate the zoning ordinance to determine regulatory obstacles that prevent raising of buildings or other improvements that protect public safe and healthy as, public health and safety as time moves on and sea levels are rising. So there, I, I wanted to show area A because there's specific recommendations for area A. Everyone sees that it's up here. In the north part of town. And so for area A, the town should seek to minimize any further forest removal by adjustments to the zoning regulations. The town has already implemented an urban forest program to increase forest cover. And coordination to preserve land, but the zoning changes minimizing further forest removal.
Don't we already have regulations on removing trees?
So that's what the, so the urban, it, it actually, the coastal resiliency plan recommended implementing recommendation for an urban forest program. And so that is what it, the tree, the, what people call the tree ordinance is actually urban forest ordinance. And so it's a little different because the urban forest regulations refer to trees. This is referring to forest removal, which, you know, a single tree is not a forest, right? But.
Profound.
Right? I'm glad I could.
But if you have to get a permit to remove a tree, then you would need a permit to remove multiple trees.
Not necessarily, because if the trees are, are all small, if you have a, a forest or forested area, but all of the trees are small, then they could be removed. They, but there are regulations around the size, right? Because the forest conservation is part of the zoning ordinance. So it's looking at the forest conservation. It's looking at if there's a higher kind of regulation or different changes that you want to make to other parts of the critical area or just other parts of the zoning ordinance. So this is something, this is something that needs to, you know, I, I need to look at the people that we're working with, critical area, um, engineer, town staff, et cetera. Need to look at and come up with recommendations to implement this goal. And then you guys would discuss that.
Might want to identify an area that has or a small trees.
Well, yeah, this is just like area A, so I'm not, I'm not really certain specifically what they were referring to, because I wasn't part of that.
Can we see like where, because we don't have that map in our thing.
It's in the coastal resiliency plan, but it's, it's not in the recommendations. It's earlier on when it splits up the areas.
I was trying, like what street?
It's basically north of, it's two sixty, right? This is two sixty?
Yeah, I mean.
And that's two sixty-one. I get the one in the zero mixups. So, right, I don't know what it's referring to, right? Because I can't think of a forest that's over there.
It's over there. Like, it's not the.
But the coastal, the, the group that formed this plan made this recommendation. And so part of it is me working with the group that formed, the people that form this plan and saying, what, what were you referring to? And what do we need to look at in the mapping?
So I'm twenty-seven in the coastal resiliency plan, okay.
And so it could be that I come to you and say, I found that there is no, that there are no forests to remove over here, so there's nothing we need to do with this, right? But I just want to do my due diligence with every piece related to zoning. So then we get to alleviate recommendations, number one. And this has to do with facilitating outward migration. So the. So the coastal resiliency plan recommends moving, moving out of the area that is going to be inundated, right? So it recommends retreat, basically. And so the zoning ordinance should help facilitate that retreat by, really through restrictions to intensifying any development in that area. Obviously, the retreat piece needs to be managed at town council level, but we need to do our piece from the zoning end, so. Incentivize or require retrofitting of parking lots. This was a picture that was in the plan just to make sure that there's more open space or places that water can go or come and go from. And so the zoning ordinance in the parking regulations, it can either incentivize or require or both, so we can look at making that happen. Ensure any future development of open parcels, especially in this zone, occurs in concert with planned mitigation efforts in the surrounding area. So this, this is just something that needs to be studied because this might require revisions to the map. I'm gonna save that for the end, sorry. Realign recommendations. And so this is, this is about allowing more flexibility in how houses can be constructed to adapt to floodwaters. This is an amphibious house. And you guys talked about these in the comprehensive plan, but I know not everyone was here. So if you don't know, it's kind of, your foundation is a box, right? And then you stick, stick your house in there, like it's a Lego thing, right? And it has guides. And so when the water comes in, the house is buoyant and it floats, but it floats up on these guides.
You have to like pump it like, you know, like a, um.
No, it just, it just automatically, it automatically floats up. There's a lot of good videos that explain it, so I can probably send some of that to you guys when we get to discussing that. Sorry.
No questions.
Okay, so that, now we're in area B, which is kind of near Fishing Creek. And so this recommendation, the main zoning recommendation is also to remove, to minimize any further forest removal. So I think that's going to be sort of, I think it was a universal recommendation that is only going to apply in certain places. Oops, can I go forward? Pretty sure there's more slides. Oh, that, that must be, that's the last slide. Okay, so that's the last slide that references any zoning recommendations. So what I will say is that one thing we talked about when we were doing the critical area update is we talked about mitigation and making sure that people who live in areas that are going to be impacted by sea level rise, that those areas that can have stormwater management and additional mitigation that can allow people to remain in those places should be the focus of mitigation. And so that was when we talked about increasing the fee and increasing the mitigation amount. More people were going to need to use fee and lieu because they wouldn't be able to mitigate on site. And so creating a higher fee and lieu and putting that fee and lieu in a bucket to focus, remember we talked about this? That's a focus.
What is this fee and lieu, you're saying if, if an area can't?
I'm tying this back into coastal resiliency, I promise. So if you live in an area, I don't, I don't know where you live, but if you live at a lot that is going to be impacted by sea level rise, then you probably live within the critical area and you have a mitigation requirement. And your mitigation requirement is more than it used to be based on the new critical area overlay.
Let's use Horizons on the Bay, because if I remember correctly, in the comprehensive plan, the sea rise is gonna, it's gonna rise right there and it could potentially flood their parking lot.
So I, I want to go back to using an individual lot because well, not because it's more complicated, but because Horizons isn't, isn't going to ask to build something right now. And so they're not going to have to do mitigation right now, right? But if somebody comes and has to do mitigation and their lot doesn't have enough space for them.
I have a really small lot, but I'm trying to like have a deck. And we're saying, right, I mean, or something like that, that.
Patio more likely, but yes, right? So now you have to mitigate, but you are planted out and you don't have any place else to plant because the planting requirement is higher, right? The idea that we talked about was in these areas. Now, what we actually want you to do, once we've developed the program, is to pay a fee and lieu because there is a solution for this street or neighborhood to increase resiliency in this street or neighborhood. And funding it becomes the question from the town's perspective because it's a big town stormwater project or whatever it is. And so that ties into this because what we were talking about was using these twenty-one hundred maps that are in the coastal resiliency plan to create an overlay zone within the critical area where all these regulations we just talked about would apply, right? So if we go backwards, right? Here's these houses, these amphibious houses, right? Do you need an amphibious house in Ridgefield Station? No, but maybe, do you need an amphibious house? On, well, no, you don't need one on C Street. But you get my point, you need, you need one somewhere. And so the regulations that allow you to do this will be permitted in this additional overlay zone is the approach that I'm recommending that we take because it allows us to focus on the properties that are impacted in the areas that are going to need the most change in regulations and potentially projects from a public works perspective.
You have a, do you have a picture of the overlay?
So it would really be, it's, it's really in your, it's in the coastal resiliency. I didn't put it up here, but.
You don't know which page it's on, actually?
No, I can pull, I think it's really broken down by area. And so we'll have to see how these areas, in area A, you have different sea level change. So we'll have to, we'll have to, to some extent, create it, you know, make, I want to say, so this twenty-fifty, twenty-one hundred. So we, we would probably take these. And, and I think we have the mapping or can access the mapping that was used to develop this. But that's how you would create the overlay is you would use the maps that are in the coastal resiliency plan.
I'm assuming these maps in the coastal resiliency report are from FEMA. I'm not sure where they got, are they FEMA?
This one does say FEMA.
Small print, I don't know.
Yes.
Identifying where they're from.
Kind of blurry, too.
There's also new mapping tools that are available from the state, so we can look at those as well.
I'm thinking we could probably do that, yeah. It might be helpful for them to see. We were shown these maps during the comprehensive plan, but you know, these guys who didn't get to see those would really, really be interesting. This is kind of hard to identify where we think it is, but.
There's a, there's a particularly nifty new, new tool called the Maryland. See if I can bring it up. I gotta keep looking. You guys keep talking and I'll see if I can find it.
Like talk amongst yourselves.
Well, yeah, but I think the most important thing for you all is to have better maps that we can identify where.
I almost feel like a field trip is in order. You know, just to see everything in the flesh.
Certainly would like to know where this, the big marsh is next to the fire department.
Well, you can smell that when you go in there or play bingo.
Well, that's, well, you can actually see how that's already enlarged. That whole swamp area has gotten bigger. But they, I don't know if Ms. Franklin can show us, but certainly the engineers actually have identified where we've had changes the last ten years, just of, you know.
Sounds like Seagate is going to be in for some trouble, too.
But we've got all the areas all across the, you know, this whole area, including this area that, you know, is questionable.
Yeah.
Um, and that's why a lot of the recommendations on the comprehensive plan were created were from these FEMA maps, seeing the, the, the size enlarge so dramatically in the, in the next fifty years or more. But, um, and that's why some of the codes changed from residential in this area to non-residential because, you know, people are concerned, why would you put residential zoning in an area that we know is going to flood?
Right.
Um, I guess some people would argue, well, you could put in those floating buildings, I guess. I don't know, I, so there's all that, but.
I think you have to try and mitigate what's here now. It seems to me to help with flooding.
Well, I, that's complicated because then you've got to get funding. You've got, there's all, that's a big, big issue.
Yeah. Right.
How do we want to start, how do we want to start with this? I mean, I know you've got these recommendations. Do you want to, is that how we're going to proceed? Is just by going through these recommendations one by one? Or how are we going to do this? We're gonna, and I know you've got people that you want to have come in and address us. You've got them listed right down below, which I think is important. How do you propose the timeline should be set out? We should probably have like in, you know, November this and December that, that's, how do you want to do this?
So I think it would be helpful to have the critical area commission come in earlier, right? Because this is, this is something we've talked about and how to use the critical area regulations to implement this. And then I think that gets you guys this basis. And if we agree this is how we're going to proceed, then we start drafting and we start bringing in people to advise as, as those drafts are being made, so.
So your first speaker would probably be, let me see, the, the CAC representative. Hopefully you could get them in next month, maybe?
Quickly, that's not the right, no need to see much. Um, I will talk to them and see if I can get them in next month.
And, you know, if not them, we would sure like to have somebody from Public Works if they could come in. They could, they could start out with what they're seeing right now with the changes and which areas. And they could probably start giving us a very local valuation of how, what they're seeing. So we could also do them in October.
Okay.
I would say those two are the first ones.
Right.
Just to give everybody an overview of what's really happening in this town or what the changes are.
Let me see, you know, let me have some calls with critical area and I'll talk to town's public works. Because we, we need to coordinate with Calver County Public Works, but that might happen sort of internally between the town and the Calver County. And we might down here, we'll see.
Right, right.
So. You can't see this because it's too small. This is from the agenda.
There you go, yeah, so.
Have someone specifically, like, the local government insurance.
Right, so Legit is the town's employer. And one of the requests you guys made was to have someone who does flood insurance to come in. And so they'll come in for free, um, they advise you. And so we'll just reach out to them and they will send the person who is best able to speak.
You shop to whom?
Legit Local Government Insurance Trust that go by Legit. And, and they're the town's insurance provider.
There, there is a Maryland flood insurance person and they have speakers.
Yeah, that's up, I mean, it's up to you guys. I just know it's, having your own insurer might be more affordable or preferable. It's up to you all, so.
Okay, so do you want also next month to come back with a timeline, a timeframe as far as how do you, how do you want, what you want to accomplish? And how long this might take and everything? Is that going to be a possible task?
Yeah, I had that, let me see if I can find that timeline that I had.
Might be a little bit harder to.
So I guess this was very small, so I'll just try to blow it up. So the idea is that next month, we're, we're a month behind, right? Because we were going to start, this presentation I was going to give last month.
Okay.
So we're really, so it's October and November that what I'll bring you is more of a memo. Like here's, here's the changes they're recommending, here's what we have, right? To, so we're looking at the zoning changes and determining what the overlay zone is going to look like. And then really December through March, more likely, you're going to start looking at language. We're going to go through each area of language and any revisions. And then hopefully it's really like April that you're holding your public hearing and sending it on. Now, I, I, that may be an optimistic timeline, right? But the idea is if we can agree on this here, once we get, then we can start getting the text together and move forward from there.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Franklin? Or any issues opening up? Okay, um, I think we have an idea about where we're headed. I think we can see we've got a, a lot of work ahead of us. Hope there's nothing else that's going to be on the agenda the next year.
It's important.
But this is very, both are very important, very important issues.
Is there anything else you want to add to that staff report?
No, I think, I think we have a plan to move forward if everyone is, is on board that this sort of, and, and that's what we'll talk about and we can look at this. I'll send this viewer to y'all, that this overlay is the way to go. Once we get that agreement, then I think we're good to move forward.
Great, and it sounds like we have somebody for a tour of the town. We need to get our maps in sync and just identify where we're having the bigger issues. But we kind of know where it's all going to be and it's writing, it's going to be in this area down.
Yeah, so just like, just because I'm going to send this to you and so you guys can see, you can play around with it. These are historic flooding events, so you've had this level of flooding before. Um, you can zoom in and see.
Is that a website that?
I'll send it to you.
Oh, yeah, you're going to give us the link on that?
This is a new tool that just came out like maybe last month, so.
What, what's the date of that information?
So there, you can get all the information on the layers. They just put this out. So really, let me, let me go back. So what you're looking at here is four point six eight feet and twenty, I don't know, oh, that's, that's sea level rise, sorry. Historic event is what I'm looking for. So historic event, this was your Hurricane Isabel, was five point one eight feet inundation. This is your October twenty twenty-one storm. Here's your January twenty twenty-four storm. Superstorm Sandy is down here. You can toggle this around, that shows you the historic events. You can see your high tide flooding at different times that are anticipated. So this is twenty seventy. And then you can see sea level rise. And I think two point four is what the coastal resiliency.
What's the earliest date?
The historic event timeline is Superstorm Sandy is the first. Is that right? No, sorry, twenty, yes, no. Hurricane Isabel, Isabel had the most, but yeah.
I lived through that.
Commissioner Grisman was talking about current mitigation, like around Seagate, et cetera. That isn't really what we're talking about. I mean, this, it's part of what we're talking about, but we're talking about a much bigger project that's going to incorporate the whole town, not just little areas that we need, we definitely need to mitigate. But I think we've been trying to mitigate for a while. But what, you know, how would you tell Commissioner Grisman, how do we not just look at one little area? you tell Commissioner Grisman, how do we not just look at one little area like Seagate? Or how do we, I mean, are we assuming that nothing's going on right there, right now with Seagate as far as mitigation in that area? Or what are we assuming about current mitigation issues?
So mitigation for projects that exist has already been completed, right? So the zoning ordinance is really addressing when you want to change something, then you have to meet these new requirements. With what already exists, if there are larger public works projects that need to be done to mitigate, that are done on public property, then I don't know what those are, right? But identifying them and using funding from the fee and lieu structure to fund them is what we're talking about. Because unless you have private development redeveloping in the area, you can't come back in and say, now, now you need to do this on your lot, even though your project's already done.
So what if somebody was going to come in with a site plan right now that was pretty major? I'm not just, would be, but how are we going to accomplish any of our goals if we have a big project coming in? Do they come under the guise of the, the changes that we're going to make with the?
So right now, they're going to be coming in under, you know, a site plan comes in tomorrow, it's coming in after your existing regulations. You do have higher mitigation levels in the critical area than you did before. And that could trigger some fee and lieu. So probably a lot, as we're doing this, at some point, I'm going to be, it's, the fee and lieu program is an internal program that will be developed, like here's where the money goes here of all of that. But you guys will be kept abreast of that as we get through there. And ultimately, the goal is that it is tied to the projects identified through the coastal resiliency plan and potentially anything we talk with Public Works about for this plan.
Okay, good.
No, we're talking about like increasing the fee and lieu program. Like, are we currently doing fee and lieu?
So we don't really accept fee and lieu. At some point, there will come a plan to the desk, whether it goes to you all or just comes to me, where the mitigation cannot be met on site because the mitigation is higher now than it was before. And
Just wondering, like, will there ever be money in this program? Like, do, do you know what I mean? Like, because all of these things seem like they're potentially really expensive and so that you would need a fair amount of money coming through fee and lieu. So I was just.
I, so I can't really say. One of the things you will want to consider as we go down this path is, in addition to the changes you're making to this, do you want to make changes to how mitigation is? Right now, the overlay says that mitigation must be done on site unless it can't, cannot, I don't know the specifics. And then it goes to fee and lieu. It's possible that you change it to say any property located in XYZ zones will use fee and lieu for 50% of their mitigation and that funding will go into the program to fund the projects in their neighborhood that are needed. So that's one thing we'll consider as we go down the path.
Okay. Any last observations or concerns about the coastal resiliency recommendations? If not, I don't see anything. Let's go to the last one, there's eight comments by commissioners. Commissioner Hahn, do you have any comments or things you'd like to bring up?
Just looking at our schedule, did we discuss November and December meetings? Because the November holiday is Thanksgiving Eve and the December is Christmas Eve.
Right. I thought we changed.
We already changed those dates way back a bit before. We will make sure those dates come out to you. I'll have to look, you probably have those listed. Yeah, she'll email all of those out to us. But thank you for, for bringing that up again. Any other questions, Commissioner Hahn?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Grisman?
Nothing further this time?
Nothing, Dan.
Okay. Well, I think we are at a point where I could use a motion to adjourn and we're going to leave five minutes early tonight. If that's okay with everybody.
Well, maybe we could talk about signs.
For chickens.
No, the chickens are done, too.
Motion to adjourn.
The chickens are, the chickens, the chickens are cooked.
Do I have a second for the motion? Do I have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you again for all that work on that site. That was hard, I thought. Did a good job there. I think it looks really clean, really good.
Also, I think though, it's good to remember that if we care about these things, it means site plans are coming through without the things.